Jake Johansson.
Yes, sir, I have two things. First of all, we just asked, and I was one of them, to put as much information about the fuel farm as we can, in as many places as we can, so as many people that need that information have access to it. It seems like government always falls short in sharing information with everybody because somebody always misses it, but it is what it is. But what I don't want to do is get into a knee-jerk reaction where we start demanding that staff put every little item on a public website, not because of public records requests, but when you start putting minutia, or the sausage grinding, on a website, or somewhere where it's accessible to the point where people can comment real time, it tends to stop government because they're so busy, like us. We have all said, we answer every email. Well, if you get 500 emails for each subject that somebody reads about, and there's 600, 590,000 people out there, you may find yourself overwhelmed pretty quick. The reason I say that is during my time in Port Orange, the city manager's email was public, real time. I'd go to a two-hour meeting, and I'd come back and have 40 or 50 emails regarding some email that somebody sent me that had a piece of information that half the folks that are interested in city government decided to comment on before I had time to. So just take that as a warning that this is a very important subject, but we can't make it a regular practice without paying some consequence to that with the slowing of government, because we're so busy answering the mail to the sausage that's being ground way before, as lawyers call it, way before the issue is ripe. And also, we had a public comment on the Live Local Act. I know that Clay Ervin and I have talked about it in detail. I see the advantages of it as a member of the A-hack. I see disadvantages of it as a member of the council and a member of the community. There are some things that are forced upon you. We knew that as soon as we read it, and we chatted about it back when it became a law. So I think we just continue that conversation. I think Clay, George, if I recall, Clay is working on, or has come up with, an overlay of areas that may be affected by the Live Local Act. And so that'll be important to have access to. But I believe, and maybe we do need a presentation, but I believe I've been brought up to speed on what they can and can't do, and where our weak spots are. Of note, I'm trying to, I've been thinking about the fuel depot the past few weeks, as we all have. And if you think about that area, it's industrial, right? Say the fuel farm was there first, and the Live Local Act came around, and where Bear Creek is, we decided to, well, we didn't decide the Live Local Act, decided to build some housing there, some low-income housing there. There'd be an equal argument that we're putting low-income people in harm's way, right? Because it's industrial, it could have been residential. And so those are some of the unintended consequences of the Live Local Act. Mr. Rosamonda, when he spoke at the meeting the other day, mentioned that at the Volusia delegation meeting, a couple of days before, I was there as well, there are some of our legislators that don't want to touch the Live Local Act. There are some that are willing to tweak it a little bit. So if we want to talk to them about the unintended consequences, or somehow craft some changes to it, that's another thing we need to put on Booker's lap to go discuss, and make sure that our legislators, and the rest of them up there that we don't talk to every day, are aware of our concerns. So I think that's important. The last thing was the PACE program, and we chatted about that, so I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman, Council. Just a couple of items here before I say goodnight for the evening. One of the things about the fuel farm at my district dialogue yesterday, there was a comment made from one of the members of the public that were there that said, you know, "I don't believe," something along the lines of, "I don't believe you all have done anything about making sure this doesn't happen again in the future." And earlier when I was speaking, I did not mention, but this council also directed staff to have Clay Ervin, actually have George Rechtinwald direct Clay Ervin, if my memory is correct, to look at all land with adjacent cities, all cities in Volusia County, and the adjacent counties that are zoned heavy industrial, to make sure this doesn't happen again. So I wanted to put that on the public record, that that was another piece of this that was done. Keith Chester, I believe, sent all of us an email, and there's a piece to it that I would like to have the information. George, this does not need to be done next week, whenever you see fit, that we can get this in the next couple of months. But the question was, you know, all the social services that we provide, what's the cost associated with all of them, and who funds them? The feds, the state, us locally? And I thought that it's a good question, because we get questions from certain groups who say, you know, "You're not doing enough for affordable housing," or "You're not doing enough for this group." This would help me answer that question to what we are doing, because I think we are doing a lot more than I'm even thinking of. So it would be good to have that in black and white. So I'm requesting that. And as you all know, my district dialogue for residents was yesterday. It was my third one. My next one will be in January. I've done it in Ormond by the Sea. I did one in Ormond Beach. I've done one in Holly Hill. We're stumped in finding a location in District Four in Daytona Beach, because we can't do it in a place that's going to charge money for it. So if we can't find something in Daytona, we're going to loop back up to Ormond by the Sea and just stay with those three on the world tour circuit, you know, that we're doing here. So I will continue to do that as long as the voters have me in this seat. It's something that I feel is important. And believe it or not, I received really positive feedback from the meeting yesterday. I had a constituent come up here today and just said, you know, "I don't know how you do it, but thank you. I loved what happened last night, and thank you for offering that." So I'm going to continue to do it. The next one will be in January, and when we get a location, I'll come back with the date of when that's going to happen. My last piece is on Item Z today. We had an amendment for the classification and compensation schedule, and on there it talked about the county manager and county attorney are subject to separate county council action. And it made me ask the question, and because of sunshine, we can't talk about this, you all didn't know that I asked this question, but it made me ask the question about an evaluation for our county manager and our county attorney. And the response I got was honest, and prior councils, from my understanding, have given a meets expectations, or a doesn't meet expectations. And to me, that's not fair. It's not fair to George, and it's not fair to Mike. It's not fair to our constituents. And I'm going to just tell you all right now, I think they both, since I've been here nine months, are doing a really good job. There are some things I'd like to see tweaked, some changes that I would like to see as one member of this elected council. So I am proposing, because here we are nine months into this, and, you know, the question was, when? When do we mark you satisfactory or unsatisfactory? Which, like I said, I think is grossly unfair to you two. I think that you two have a laundry list of accomplishments, and that needs to be showcased. It needs to be shared. And each of us, as your bosses, needs an opportunity to tell you where things are working well, and where we can fine-tune and tighten some things up a little bit. So, Council, I'll go to Mike Dyer first, and this is just a blueprint. We don't have to vote on this tonight, but Mike, I'm hopeful that you're going to take this feedback, and then if there's something you think you want to add to it, or delete from it, or any council members, I think they could talk to you privately. It might give them food for thought tonight, they might want to tell you tonight. But first of all, I would use a scale score of one to five, one being the lowest, five being the highest, a one being unsatisfactory, a two meaning needs improvement, a three meaning meets expectations, a four is exceeds expectations, and a five is outstanding. And I would look at these things. Legal competency. Problem-solving and decision-making. Management of the legal department. Management of litigation and claims. Your management style. Your interaction with the county manager. Your relationship with your county council. Your community relations. Your communication. And your intergovernmental relations. George, yours is a little bit longer. But, you know, also, this is going to help me when anybody, and I haven't had anybody, by the way, but I suspect when we talk about this, because we're also going to talk about compensation every year, whenever, you know, we go over your evaluation, and not just you, but Mike Dyer as well. But I already told you all, I like to have a good argument when someone asks me a question, a good response, not a good argument, but a good response. And, you know, some people like to say that you're paid too much, both of you. Well, part of my argument is, and Jake coming as a city manager before, look at the number of employees that you have, George. Let's look at other CEOs with those number of employees, and I would argue that you're underpaid when we evaluate it like that. And Mike Dyer, I could do the same thing for you. But George, yours is a little bit longer. There will be five sections that I'm recommending. Section one is professional skills. Your leadership, your decision-making and judgment, your coordination, your ability to work with others as a team and express individual viewpoints, your planning and organization, how you're doing legislatively, how you advise your council on relevant legislation and developments, budgeting, financial management, financial reporting, financial control. Section two would be your interactive skills, your interpersonal relationships, your community relations, your governmental relations, your responsiveness, your dispute resolution, how you follow direction, and your grantsmanship. Section three would be your communication skills with your county council, your relationship with the county council, with your relationship with the press, access to you, the activities, meaning the reports for departmental and staff activities to the council in an appropriate and timely manner, your staff, how you develop and maintain positive relationships with staff, how you communicate clearly, the residents, businesses, and general public, how you interact with them. Only two more sections. Section four, administrative skills and traits, your job knowledge, your coordination, or your ability to work with others as a team, your creativity, planning and organization, personnel management, motivation and leadership, operational efficiency, your honesty and integrity, your adaptability. And Mike, I think we can add that to yours as well, the honesty and integrity. I'd like to see that on yours as well. And then the last area, administrative skills and traits, your initiative, your resiliency, and last but not least, your ethical standards. And Mike, we can add that one to yours as well, ethical standards. I just think we owe it to you two to give you honest feedback so that we, as a county, can be better. So, Council, that's where I am with it. I'm not making a motion now unless I feel like, you know, I need to. I just don't want to, I don't want to give a generic meets expectations or doesn't meet expectation. Like, you know, I work all year long, and I've had bosses in the past who sit me down for my annual review and say, "You did a great job." That fires me up. I want to know how I did a great job. I want to know where I can get better. And I think we owe that to both of you gentlemen, and also to your departments. There's going to be some homework on both of your parts, because there's a story here of success that you two need to make sure you share with us, so that it's also shared with the public. And there's also room for improvement. So, Council, it's going to be coming up. I don't know when, but I don't want to be caught flat-footed with zero evaluation. Chairman, I don't know if you want to open it up for anybody else to make a comment on this, you know, what they think, so they can let staff know they're in agreement on the same page. And then, you know, we started in January, so it might be appropriate since a year has gone by, but that'll be happening in three short months. So I see a couple of people shaking their head. And with that, I will say, goodnight, and I think a good budget and a good tax rate is when not everyone is happy. Not everybody gets what they want. And, you know, I feel that way tonight. Not everybody got what they wanted, but we passed something that will keep the level of service high in Volusia County, and for me, that's a win. Thank you.
Since you brought it up, I do want to, I think we should discuss it just a little bit more. In years past, on the council, when we finished the budget, Ben Johnson would always say, "We need to give a raise to the county attorney, county manager." I think several of us had already given them an evaluation, a written evaluation. I know that I did. Yours is very good. I was going to suggest tonight that we make this a separate item for the next meeting, so that we can all think about it, do our own evaluation. I would like for you to email that to the county attorney, so he can send it to the rest of us, so any councilman can choose to use yours or use their own, and really put thought into it. And you can either share that with the county attorney and county manager in writing privately, share it here, or any way you want to do it is fine with me.
And Chairman, I'll just say, I did just share just a 30,000-foot view publicly, but I will do that. I will send it to the county attorney and the county manager respectively, both of them, so they can look at them, and they can then send them out to us.
Good.
Because, and I'll just say really, if I can, I hear what you're saying about how it was done in the past, but I'm not a no-go on a raise, but I'm a no-go on a raise until we've done a thorough evaluation.
I agree.
After we do the thorough evaluation, then I'm willing to look at compensation and make adjustments where necessary, but until that happens, I'm a no-go.
Yeah, I don't know how you do it without going through that evaluation first, so that's why I would like to see it as a separate item, and then we can discuss, then we're able to discuss whether or not there is a raise and how much it is. George Rechtinwald.
Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Kent, I appreciate you putting it out there for us to look at. What I'm taking out of the conversation is, you'll be sending that, and we'll be taking a look to, is this going to be the instrument of which we're going to be rated on or evaluated on? Not that you're going to, next week or next meeting, come back with an evaluation. Traditionally, that has been done in December, and just for the benefit of those who are new, I will be putting together, Mike and I both will put together a report on our year's worth of activities, and that often is used later on when we get into, you know, the actual annual report for the county. So we'll put that together, and in the meantime, we'll take a look. Thank you. This is a, I need to probably write speed writing as one of them, but I think, thank you if you'd send it to me. And then we'll take a look, and if there's any tweaks or whatever, and then we can bring it back for discussion, maybe the next meeting, as far as if everyone agrees, because that's been one thing, is we haven't had an agreement in the past on how we would do it, so everybody kind of did their own thing. And Will, Mike can go over that a little bit, too, because it's the nature of it being a public, very public process, that there's things we have to, I think, make sure we're handling fairly for everybody.
And George and Mike, I'll just also add, if there's something in addition to what I send you and what I've mentioned that you think should be on your evaluation, I'm totally open to hearing what you think would be appropriate as well. I may not agree whenever we all talk about it, but I'm open to listening to it, because, you know, it's important.
Sure. Now, we can put together some other instruments, if that's what council's inclined to do. I looked at a couple, and they're very similar. They may be formatted differently, they may phrase things differently, but they're covering to some grounds.
And I didn't say, but George, yours was also on a scale, what I had from a one to five, the exact same rating as Mike Dyer's.
Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kent brings up a pretty robust evaluation, but I'm willing to let you do that hard work and give it to us. I'm sure I'll enjoy reading both of them. The other thing I think we all do, too, is we share our thoughts on your leadership throughout the year. I think that's important, to not wait until the end of the year to realize that you're doing great or not doing great, and I'm sure we all provide feedback to you. But I think it's important that we evaluate you, something to put in your personal record, something that we can look back at if things get good or things get bad. My question, Mike, which I knew what it was back in the old days, but I don't know how it is here, if this comes back and we write notes, is it personnel-related and therefore protected, or is it a public record and therefore available for everybody to see?
It would all be public record.
Yep, okay. Just checking. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, I just, I hope we'll let Don speak. I hope that we can wrap this up. I just, I think this is critically important, that we do this. You run, it's like running a Fortune 500 company with a number of employees the size of our budget. I don't know how, you know, we're expected, we heard it with the velveteer thing, people want us to be responsible for what we're doing. I don't know how else we can do this without a formal evaluation process. You have provided every year a list of what you have done, what you've accomplished, challenges that you had. So I would just ask the council to consider timing. If we want to do this in December, or if we want to do it sooner, but I don't want to do it tonight. I want everybody to have time to think about it.
Please, not tonight.
And so...
I think historically, this long predates George and I. I think how December evolved was, it was always late September when you decided if there were any page estimates for all other employees. So the decision on the manager and the attorney would always be after that, and, you know, so it's within a space, a couple of months. I think that's how, just being here, I think that's how it evolved into December.
December also gives us 12 months with you. That gives us a year.
Yeah, and I think that is actually part of it as well, because of the change that occurs with you guys in January, so it doesn't coincide with the fiscal year. But, and that would be the same for even our employees. I mean, they're usually done often on an anniversary date, not on, you know, not necessarily running with the fiscal year.
So everybody's good with December? Would you still, please, if he sends you that evaluation form, you'll provide it to the rest of the council? I'm assuming it should go through legal?
Yeah. From sunshine purposes. My understanding is we'd be bringing back an agenda item with that information.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Don Dempsey.
Yeah, I just had one question for Troy. What was the 17th thing on that list?
Seventeen was ethics.
Ethics, okay, there you go.
That was 17B.
Or George, that was only number 11 for Mike. George is a little bit longer, because he has 2,000 employees, and Mike has under 30, so...
No, my, I guess my question is, Mike, you probably know this, you probably get one every year. The Florida Bar offers us the same opportunity every year to rate judges, and we can evaluate their knowledge of the law, their demeanor, all that stuff, that I think what we're looking for here. But fortunately, our evaluations are anonymous. So are we looking to make this an anonymous evaluation? That when we turn this in, that George has no idea, and Mike has no idea who wrote it?
It cannot be anonymous, so it'd be all public record.
And Mike, I'll just jump in, if you don't mind, and the comment was earlier about, you know, if notes are on there, and you said it's public record. So yeah, anything you write on there, any notes or anything, is going to become part of the public record, and our names have to be tied to it, along with our ratings for each one. I'm also hopeful that after each section, we have an area for comments, so that we can write specific comments about things as well.
Is that, that's by statute, or ordinance, or, I mean...
It's just a public record, so it's part, there's no exemption for it in the public records law. You know, when we do evaluations of our employees, they're public record, so there's nothing confidential on it. You know, I would say, there are a couple of the, you know, models we can pull together. I know the, you know, in my case, International IMLA, which is the City Manager Association, they have a template evaluation we can chair, and like I said, there are many are the same. And also, too, you know, I would say about the evaluation process, I know we talk to each of you all the time, so if there is something that you need, or you want...
Please don't wait for the evaluation. That's something we, of course, we, just as Mr. Johansson said, in all of our leadership, we encourage communication throughout the year, so that it's not a surprise when there is an evaluation at the end. And I will say, I think to the point on the record, on the written record, you know, a lot of, it's not that we haven't evaluated, we just always have been evaluated verbally, for the most part, with one or two exceptions. So it's been mainly, you know, done verbally, usually in a one-on-one, and then it's talked about here, out in the open, as they usually make the motion on any kind of raise that was going to come. So that's how it's been.
Been a public process.
Yeah.
Councilman Santiago.
Yeah, my comment on this, before I do the evaluation, I'm going to make a request, Mike. Please don't answer today. I think you have, but I, on the personal notes thing, I take difference with that of being a public record. I ask that you assign someone, or yourself, look at the statute on that, because I challenge that, let me just put it that way, if we can get that. that, let me just put it that way, if we can get that, personal notes.
Well, I, I can look at it. I think you're, we're talking about two different things. If you write a comment on the evaluation instrument and give it to me.
That's public record.
Then that's public record. If you're talking about just your internal notes, like for example, Mike Dyer is a fantastic guy.
I just wrote that and I threw it in the trash when you said that.
Can we please have, please, can we have Attorney Appreciation Day somewhere along the line?
That would be nice.
Yeah, Don. I'm glad you clarified that, because I want to, I think my colleagues should know to clarify, not all of our personal notes are public record.
Exactly. That are not shared.
All right. Yeah. That's good. I think Ms. Wallace deserves that. Okay, Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I had a whole list of things and I totally forgot them because Troy went forever. So I, it was like such a long list, I totally forgot everything. Only two items, it was broken down into 572,000 sub items. So anyways, I have nothing. Thank you, Chair. Good night.
Vice Chair Robbins.
Unfortunately, I can't be that lucky. I'm sitting up here about three years now and I've seen some meetings get off the rails a little bit, mainly because of, of policy or not following, following policy. And I really learned that importance when, when David got on this board. I get my fair share of criticism, some deserve, some because I'm opinionated, black and white. So I'm not as good-looking as Don. But with that said, I just, I'll apologize in advance for any ugly, mean or, excuse me, accurate things I'm about to say. I feel that in a lot of ways when I get to the land. If we didn't have a double standard, we wouldn't have any standards at all. And I say that depending on the political popularity of a, of a subject, agreements or disagreements, or the topic or an agenda that is being driven. I say that some days we get singled out up here, some days we don't, some days we allow it, some days we allow it to slide, some days we respond to public comment, some days we do not, some days we let people take minutes past their time, some days we do not. What are we going to do when people complain? There's Section 2-66, subsection 5. Generally, council members do not ask questions of speakers who respond to questioning during public participation. Speakers shall make their comments in requests to the county council members, consider their comments. But getting back to some double standards, I want to add, we approved housing by a landfill recently, I think unanimously. What are we going to do when people can, complain? Months ago, we decided the Scots, when we denied the Scots a rezoning, the prevailing side, it was mainly the consensus was, I believe the person should be entitled to use the zoning in which it was purchased. They aren't entitled to a change. I say this in comparison to what we're dealing with today with the fuel farm and to what David said earlier, you know, hit home. We have to make hard decisions, but we can't ignore the facts. And I want people to understand my frustration when it comes to following the policy we've adopted, consistency, running an effective and efficient meeting, not creating orchestrated chaos depending on the political mood, not fueling fires, not ignoring the facts that we are provided. It's no different when council adopted Land Ownership Bill of Rights. And where I was getting at today, when I was trying to get to a, prior, a policy change, I already knew the policy because it was set back on 9/5/23 on the dais and why I made the motion and challenged some of what was being done today. Because there's a policy change that was promoted and said on the record, we need to change zoning for the fuel farm. Things change and occasionally we need to change the zonings based on changes in the Today, we were looking for fingers to point at people, to get the burden off of us. It turned into a witch hunt. I'll defend anybody up here if that ever happens again. I don't care who it is. It was wrong. And I'll say it and I'll be ready to take whatever political heat that I'll take. So at the end of the day, if anybody's to blame for any information not getting out there or transparency, it is my fault and it is this council's fault. No one else's. It's not staff's fault. We're provided all this information. The problem is, in a lot of these situations like David brought up, nobody wants to be the bad guy. Nobody wants to sling that pistol. And at the end of the day, we can't ignore the facts of what we're dealing with. What we're dealing with happened in 2006. It is zoned by right. Property owners have rights too. We haven't received an application. We received a legal memo on August 21st, 2023 stating we have no legal standing in a permit process. Ormond Beach, same thing. So what do we do? Do we keep pointing the fingers or do we get down to the brass tacks and tell people the damn truth? I want everybody to marinate on that, because it's bothering me. So ask each other, what do we do? It's not easy. We didn't sign up for an easy job. We're doing everything that we can legally and the people have to understand that and we have to come to grips with that. But at the end of the day, this isn't cut and dry and we have to do the right thing, even though if it's unpopular. And I don't support this, any portion of it, but we have to do things legally and we have to be straight with the folks. That's all I got.
Keltzman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Danny, I, I think I would say, you know, very well, good points to kind of sort of recap some of the things that I think we can improve on as a council. You know, just, I wasn't planning to talk about the fuel farm, but I had a lady that came up to me afterwards, after we did what we had, and she was pretty fired up about it. She doesn't want it. And she asked me the questions about the process and how it works and what's, what's going on. Why can't we just do this? And, and I brought it really for, simple terms for her, because it's very complex. I mean, not to insult her, but the process is complex. And I just said, I said, you, you own a lot in this, and there's homes all around this lot, and you want to build a house that's maybe different than what's around it. But you're permitted in your zoning to have a house there that you want to build as long as it fits, meets our code. I said, how would you feel if you heard all your neighbors came around and said, we don't want you to build your house on that lot? So when I, when I, when I put it to her that way, she was like, oh, okay, I understand. And then, then she asked a follow-up question, can you guys take away the zoning? And I explained to her, no, we can't. I said, maybe down in the future, depending on how things go, but now we have a potential applicant that's got rights and we have to deal with it accordingly. So I, I explained it to her the first time I met her and she thanked me again, but I, I think clarity is key. Not fueling the fire doesn't, doesn't help all of us, because we keep getting, we're all the ones getting shot over something we didn't do. So the best thing is to be honest with the folks. I, that's my opinion, I'll echo that.
I wasn't singling, singling, I wasn't pointless on you as a collective.
Yes, I'm saying, yeah, just to be clarity, and I agree with the content, your comments on that. So I took shots of saying, you know, watch out for the legal process, right? I, I get it. But I also understand where the people were coming from. But we have to do our job. That's what we're, 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 I liked it to do and to do it the right way. So I just wanted to add that, I wasn't planning to, but. And I, I do have one concern that came out of that. I want to see what was the direction to staff. Did we direct staff to now involve all of us in the pre-application process to be aware of all pre-apps that come into the county? Is that what we said? I, I hope not.
And I was getting ready to, to finish, because that's, that's something I had here.
Yield.
We have to, thanks, David. We have to be very careful on how we handle this. And I say this because we're bound by the charter and this is day-to-day policy, day-to-day operations. This, people have to be honest with the folks. If, and when I ask and I put people on the spot, it's not because I'm trying to be a pain in the rear end, it's because we are bound by policy, we're bound by law. Okay? And the charter, whether we like it or not, if there's a policy change, I've offered many council members this, I will make the motion for you, just as Mr. Kent has. I will make the motion or second it to, to, to see where the, the temperature is, but we just can't be just so freelancing when it comes to this, because we have to uphold the law. If there's a law that we don't like, let's set policy to change it, not shoot from the hip for, I don't want to say political gain, but, but in a highly contentious, to, to, to do whatever, you know, it ain't right. We have to do a better job. We have policy in place. Mr. Kent, you know, was forced to defend himself today. And, and what he did.
Don't forget about yesterday.
And yesterday. But on that same, under that same section though, I would appreciate in the future that we follow the policy of not responding. We're all going to take shots. We're big boys and girls up here. To respond to this stuff is not the time and the place. If we have to address something, it's during council comments. Because the same people that were sitting here waiting, we've done it in the past and it hasn't worked, they have agenda items too. Attorneys sitting down, all this stuff, but now we're going to something that's not an agenda item. We're looking, we're beating around the bush on a policy decision or a policy direction. We all know it, no one wants to admit it, I get it. No one wanted to be the bad guy, not a problem. At the end of the day, that's what it was and I think people got the point. I think we can do better. Let's just please follow the policy we adopted. That's, that's my only gripe.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll just, so I think I see an agreement that we did not direct staff to make us aware of all pre-apps. That 400, those, I don't want to be responsible for looking at 400 pre-apps.
That's correct. That was not the direction, but I believe what we're going to do, you know, is just provide a link or a way for people who are interested in looking at what the pre-apps are, that they can, we can make that setup. So, and that actually can happen today, it's just, it's not an easy, you know, click of the button. So we'll work on how maybe people who are interested and want to take a look at that, I'll talk to the team about maybe what kind of a summary or something could be provided or a table of contents, something that would make it easy if someone wanted to click and see which each of them were. And again, like I said, I think that everyone has learned, maybe people got a little complacent, but I think they've learned that if there, if there is something that they suspect is a, is going to create an issue, they'll let people know up, up the line. I have confidence in that. And on top of that, as Mr. Kent had asked, we're going to be looking proactively at some potential areas of conflict so that we, you know, have an idea. I guess I'll just give a little plug here too. I don't want to go too far as it's late, but I will say something for maybe long-term thinking, you know, industrial land in itself isn't, shouldn't necessarily be a bad word, because we need it. We need it for our community. It's part of what a healthy community has to have, a mix of all land uses. And we're already, we have less than a county with our population and size. I think we're less than 5%. So, and then tie that into something like the railroad, which is an infrastructure piece that's put in and has to operate along those tracks. And there, and it's an infrastructure piece meant for carrying heavy bulk materials. So, you know, this is a bigger problem probably than just Volusia County, but it's an idea statewide, is, if we do grow, how do we grow in such a way to protect lands that are for industrial, because we need that to supply us, we need that for jobs. And that is a critical part of our infrastructure.
That's a good point. I mean, going back to what you said, and I'll wrap up with this, so we have industrial zoning, I'm guessing scattered maybe, but if it's this A, I forgot, the, the heavy industrial two classification, then there could be another fuel farm going up in that area because it's a permitted use, technically, right? They still have to go through the process, so, yeah. And I'm done, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's why it's a good idea that council has already directed staff to look at areas where we have industrial zoning and, and see if it needs to be changed now. If the city, because what happened in Ormond is that the city grew up around it. And so, anyway. Mike, is there any, any legal reason or policy reason why the council couldn't be made aware, if any member that wanted to, of a pre-app application? No? Okay. Then he answered it for you.
Wait, yeah, I mean, you can share information. I mean, I just, I just want to, you know, and I, I think I've, Mr. Santiago just, I think reinforced the point, you know, that your staff, when you're in those meetings, I mean, they're applying the zoning code as this council has adopted it. So when something is a permitted principal use, that's a green light for the use. Now, they still have to go through site plan approvals, might have to get different requirements they have to satisfy, but your staff is obligated to work with the public, businesses, homeowners, you know, to share what the code provides, what the process is. So, because the council has decided, just like local governments around the country, this use shall be permitted without needing approval of the governing body. So it's the biggest green light any use I can have in your zoning code. So.
Okay. The, I would, I would like to see them, but George, I like your, where you're heading with maybe a summary with a link that you can click on if you want to. It still puts the onus on, on us to, to look at it. The public expects us to, to be knowledgeable and transparent. And, and right now, the City Commission of Ormond Beach, the county council here is being accused of, of not. And so I'm looking at ways for me to, to, you're never going to get rid of all the accusations and you're never going to get rid of all of the criticism. But for me, I just want to be in a better position to, to know what's, what's coming down the pike. And I'll just end with this, the, the purpose, the purpose of government, the chief purpose of government, in my opinion, is protect the rights of the people, all of the people. And sometimes that means that there's, there's tension between the rights of, of somebody in an industrial area and the, the rights of the homes around it. And it's messy and we have to deal with it. And I don't think that's bad or wrong, it's just is, it's just messy. What I hope that we won't get into is, is trying to read the minds of each other of why we would be concerned with it. Because I can't read your mind and you can't read my mind. So I have enough respect for everybody that I trust what you're doing is, is because you want to do the best job possible. We did change after public comments, we did change the policy temporarily, I think it came from David, and I think it was correct, that those people were here and they wanted to hear from us. And so we didn't respond to every person, but we talked about that subject and, and got it out of the way while they were all here. I, I think it was the right decision. David?
Mr. Chairman, I think you were right, you know, when you said about the rights of the people. Mr. Chairman, I think you were right, you know, when you said about the rights of the people and, and we have to protect those. But I just had to feel, act, because I'm a technical guy, is that businesses have rights too, right? Business owners have rights too. So we have to balance those. And that's why the procedures and process have to be applied to everyone equally. That's how I operate. Because if, we cannot violate the rights of a business entity who has similar rights, right to free speech. So it's been established for, for years, right? So those two have to go within the process that we have. And that's kind of how I try to govern and do the best I can without violating anyone's rights, both sides.
Okay. Vice Chair Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. And I just, like I said, I just need some clarity so I know where my head's at or where this council's head's at on how we go forward here. Or if we need to make amendment to Section 2-66, subsection 5. I, I do agree that, that sometimes these subjects have to be talked about. I really do. And it's important. But are we going to set precedence on addressing every concern now and there forward? To, because every subject, big or small, is important to somebody or whatever. We have a thousand different things that get talked about. Are we going to now bend this policy and address this stuff in the future while those people are here? Or do we do it correctly at the end of the meeting if we, or set it on the agenda if we, if it's that important? That's all I'm getting at. I just want to follow policy or clarify policy because I'm thoroughly confused.
Okay. And I'll just answer that for, for me. I, I don't see that as what happened. I think local government is a government that, that touches the people the closest. And I think being flexible, I don't think we broke a policy. A request was made from a council member. Everybody agreed with it at the time and, and we carry. I don't, I don't think it's, we harmed policy. Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question and I may be way off topic, so forgive my ignorance. So if we review these application process, this application thing, correct? And we find something concerning, legally, what can we do to do about it? I mean, aren't we in the same thing where if we, are we going to go back and say, well, then we should change the zoning classification for that area? We can't do that, right? We can't. So I, I'm just saying, it's great to be aware of these things and that's really all you're going to do, correct? Is just making us aware. So we're going to review hundreds and hundreds of these things just to be aware.
No, we're not.
Okay, no. And that's, I said, forgive my ignorance. Explain, I'm sorry.
Like you say, I think we're just going to make it easier, like I say, to, for people who want, who have an interest can take a look at it and maybe provide some way to zero in a little easier because there are so many of them. You know, maybe through a table of contents or something because a lot of things are housing-related and other things that I'm sure probably don't.
No, I mean, I don't want to see all those, so.
But, you know, it might be that you want to see anything that's heavy industry or whatever it is that's got you.
And it, and it, all that does is just makes us aware.
And then all it does, all it would do would make you aware of a pre-application. If somebody is thinking about doing this.
But it doesn't give us the avenue to change anything. And, and we see something that we're making us, you're making us aware. And that's great. There's a nuclear power plant coming into, to, but it's, it's zoned for that. And we know that we're going to fill this, this area with people that are in objection to it, but we knew about it. But what can we do to change it? Nothing. All we're doing is making ourselves aware.
Well, it's a topic for another day, but you have a, you have a similar issue with if you want to change the zoning of another piece of property.
I got, oh, for future. Okay, okay. Well, then that explains it better.
I think every case is dependent on the facts, but you might have a case where somebody has reasonable investment back expectations error that would be governed by Birch Harris. That's not anything any of us could, you know, give you a bright line rule on.
Okay.
It's going to depend on the case.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I know, it's, it's a good question.
Vice Chair Robbins.
Thanks. And just to close this off, we're policymakers. And, and as you guys can see, where my, a little bit more out of frustration when I put people on the spot, what is your policy change? What we can't do, and we ran into this last council where several people were micromanaging staff, that is their job. We entrust them with that and we evaluate them at the end of the season. It's like, imagine getting email, a thousand emails on, how long is a piece of rope? Hell, if I know, you know? We don't know what we don't know. If we don't have an application yet. Enough said. Have a good night.
Okay, and with that, this meeting is adjourned at 9:22.